That's why a lot of guys in Clinton.
But that ain't the right spot to do it.
No.
I was just trying to move it over. It's on my side, yeah.
All right, I have six thirty. As soon as Mr. Oliver is ready.
No pressure, Charlie.
No pressure, Mr. Oliver. You take your time.
No worries. I always do.
It is six thirty on September twentieth. Welcome to the Macomb Township Planning Commission meeting. Could everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to my flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bentley, Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I shall. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Marley?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Spatafora?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, present. All present and accounted for.
Okay. Next item is the approval of previous meeting minutes. Any discussion? Questions?
I make motion. If there are no other comments or corrections, that we approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bentley.
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any corrections, deletions, comments?
If there are none, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Old business, Mr. Box.
There's no old business.
There's no old business. Okay, so let's move on to new business. Site plan, Fremont Crossing Commercial Permanent Parcel 08-35-100-004. Located on the southeast corner of Twenty One Mile Road and Card. Section thirty-five, MM twenty-one Card LLC petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So there are three items on your agenda tonight. Those are three different items. They're all with the same PUD development that you've seen before, so you should all be somewhat familiar with the property and the development as a whole. It is located at Twenty One Mile and Card on the southeast corner. And again, you have seen the PUD plans. You've approved the general design plan through the PUD previously. So they are now coming in with the site plans individually for the site as a whole, as well as the individual phases and units within the PUD. So this first one being that of the commercial portion, but it's really the utilities within the site of the commercial portion. So they do have the two access points, one off Twenty One Mile Road and one off of Card Road. They do have the necessary pedestrian pathway system that was shown on their general design plan, as well as the screening and the detention basin that were required. Being, seeing that they've met all of those requirements and all of their other requirements, at this time, staff is recommending approval for the commercial portion, the utility portion of the PUD.
Okay. Mr. Box, what do you mean by utility portion? They're just putting...
Well, so the, just the detention basin and how the individual sites will connect up to that.
Okay, so they're not doing any building of...
There's, there's no structures on this for this agenda item. That's correct.
Okay. Petitioner in the audience? Come on up, sir, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Mario Izzy with MM Twenty One Mile, four-six-six-zero-zero, Romeo Plank, Suite Number Five.
Any comments for us?
No questions, no comments, sir. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
That's easy. Commissioners? Comments, questions? And I, nobody.
Mr. Chairman, I did for Mr. Box. Mr. Box, as part of this plan, I believe the petitioner would have had to get approval from Macomb County Department of Roads. Does that typically happen before the site plan for us or after?
I believe that they've already worked with the county road department, and Mario can speak to that. But sometimes it takes place before, sometimes it takes place after. They're not going to get through engineering without that, but I believe they've already taken care of that.
To Mr. Izzy, is that, is that complete, the approval for the curb cuts and whatnot? The geometry, Mr. Tuckfield, thank you for the question. The geometry of the curb cuts is approved with the road commission. We are not fully engineered just yet, but that will happen simultaneously with the engineering for the onsite. Just to make sure that everything drains properly. If there's any changes for water main, sanitary sewer, God forbid, we can have everything coordinated at the same time with all the reviewing agencies, including the drain office, township, road commission, et cetera.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Izzy, this bioswale that you have shown here, is that going to hold water or just, or is this a a low inlet, outlet, it's going to let the water out right away or...
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. One of the reasons why it's probably taken so long since the last time we were in front of this planning commission is because some of the stormwater requirements have changed from the county level. What they're looking for is some more environmentally friendly stormwater treatment applications. This is one of them. So we want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a situation where we're proposing something that maybe the county would like, but conflicts with township ordinances, engineering ordinances. So we've been going back and forth. I think it was a good compromise between the county and the township. To answer your question specifically, it will hold water during a heavy rain event, but it's designed so that that water will, will absorb, and we're basically treating stormwater runoff onsite rather than just flushing everything through the system, which was more of a typical design standard prior to.
So will that percolate into tubes, culverts that hold more water?
It, it percolates right into the ground. If that ground has frost, where we find where these things get a little tricky is in the, is in the spring. And your experience, I'm sure you know better than anybody, when you have frost in the ground, you have to have a Plan B, because if that water doesn't perk through, you have to have an outlet. So there'll be a stormwater, a storm catch basin set at the appropriate invert elevation, so that if this bioswale does fail, we have a backup plan for stormwater.
You wouldn't want to use the word fail. You'd want basically to say, if it was frozen...
Yeah. But essentially, it would, not to argue with you, or be argumentative, but it's not doing what it's supposed to do at that time of year.
Couldn't perform because of...
Yeah.
Weather conditions.
To credit to Mr. Van Tiflin, that was one of his concerns. He wants to make sure that storm drainage doesn't affect roads, doesn't affect basements, doesn't affect, you know, the normal business, course of business during the day, and we want to make sure that there is a overall underlying stormwater system that will treat this in case something doesn't perform properly. How's that? Yes, sir.
Regarding the bioswale, does it overflow if it does overflow? Does it go into a catch basin that is directed to the detention pond first? So that, okay, and then, is it, is it provided with plants that will take care of the oils and grease on the parking lots and such, so that that doesn't going to go into the system as well?
Correct. Yes, sir. So the stormwater, the detention pond, first of all, it has to be sized accordingly for the appropriate volume, regardless of bioswales or not. So and I believe it'll be part of the final landscaping that we have to landscape these with particular plant. That's part of the new standard that's been passed down, I believe, from the federal level down to the county levels. We're starting to see that this is becoming more and more of a, of a... I shouldn't say requirement, it's more of an ask. And we are required to demonstrate certain things to try to treat the stormwater onsite as much as possible.
They're adopting the lead strategies then for...
It's, it looks like everything's pointing in that direction now, Mr. Bentley.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, Mario, maybe we discussed this at an earlier phase in this development, but the pond, will that retain water or will it be empty unless there's an overflow?
It, it will hold a certain amount of water. We tend to overdig our detention ponds a little bit more than probably necessary to anticipate any sedimentation that might happen and try to decrease the amount of times that the HOA would have to clean this out and try not to put the burden on them. So we do overdig them. It will hold a certain amount of water.
Follow-up, were the slopes on that proposed pond as such where you had to put a fence around it or not?
You know what? Great question. I don't know that I have that answer. Mr. Box, do you know if we're required to put a fence on it?
I believe there is one around this.
Thank you. I apologize. I didn't know the answer to that.
Doesn't, it doesn't show one or doesn't call it out, at least on...
And I don't have my packet in front of me. I apologize. But I believe there is one. There's, I know there's the masonry wall on the east side along Unit Four, and I believe that, that leads into the fence around the remainder portion of the pond. But again, they, that's a requirement through engineering. They wouldn't get through engineering if, if it's required and they're not going to do it. They wouldn't get through engineering, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else with questions? So, none? I'm going to go ahead and Mr....
Regarding the bioswales, generally, depending on the planting, they look terrible when done properly. I guess, well, in my opinion. But is there any, are you trying to screen those in any way? Is there any requirement to screen them or to fence them off? Because you've got a walk path that's right adjacent to it. I don't know what the slopes are on the bioswale, but generally they're, they can be very steep and there's a lot of tall weeds or plantings sometimes. And if kids are walking through there, that could be an issue. Just wondering if there's any requirements that you've seen.
My experience, and it's very, very limited as far as building bioswales, a lot of, use a lot of grasses, tall grasses, natural grasses to grow. I think this is going to be something, the, the good thing about this being developed as a, as a, as a PUD, as a commercial condo, there will be some, some management that's going to have to be coordinated between all the commercial units. So this being a general common element, this is something that if somebody, one particular unit isn't doing what they're supposed to do, the other units can get involved and pressure them to try to maintain that. So I could see, you know, in commercial developments, it's just a natural occurrence, wrappers, debris, things get blown around. It doesn't make it in the garbage can like it's supposed to. If that ends up in the bioswale, that's going to be, have to be part of the normal maintenance. And if that bioswale isn't maintained, it's not going to function the way it's supposed to. So
Correct.
Maintenance is going to have to be something that we're going to have to pay close attention to with the management company here if we decide to self-manage this project with the maintenance of it.
Right.
So, thank you for the question.
So it will be managed then?
Will be ma, yes, it has to be managed, absolutely. We will maintain ownership of one of these units. As of right now, we have a long-term lease in line for Unit Number Three, so it's in our best interest to make sure that this property is ma, maintained and managed properly.
Is there a timeline that you will do the maintenance on? It usually takes like, sometimes it takes five years for those to develop and where they'll, you know, continue on their own. But if the management or if your management is not going to last five years, let's say, then that could, that could really just fall apart.
I, I think because it's always going to be, there will always be a condominium association in place that can't go away. So there, there will always be the ability for this condominium as a whole, you know, take a step back and look at the management of the overall property, all the common elements, the grass has to be cut, irrigation. The detention basin has to work. It has to function. If something plugs up the outlet pipe or the inlet pipe, that's just something that's going to have to be part of normal maintenance. I imagine the township could get involved if they had to, to at least make a phone call and say, hey, you know, this needs to be maintained or somebody's not doing what they're supposed to do. But it shouldn't come to that, I, I don't think. We have a similar situation with a commercial development in Shelby Township. Rarely do we get a phone call from Shelby Township. It's more of property that's common area on the other side of the masonry wall that, for whatever reason, the landscaper didn't cut that week. They missed. But the ponds, the storm scepters, they are maintained on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then I'd like to go ahead and open this to the public at six forty-five with a motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, folks, if there's anybody that'd like to come up and speak, come on up, please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
To the podium.
No, no, on the podium, sir. I'm sorry. That was my mistake.
Hello, my name is Dennis Peter. The address is two-one-eight-six-four East Sunset Drive. The subdivision that would be abutting to the condo area. On East Sunset Drive. I'm wondering why they're going to wreck it all or... Anything between the existing condos and then...
Okay, we, we take all of your questions and concerns and we answer, and we try to answer them at the end, so, you know. That's it?
The other thing was the graphic. Having lived there for twenty-six years, it's almost been terrible. Turn left on Card Road anymore. Judging on what's happening on the north side, northeast side, that interruption, shock, I don't know, I'll try handle it. It's horrible, horrible area living right now. Those are my questions.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Hey, why don't I see somebody back there? Come on up. Name and address.
Hi, this is... My address is...
Well, you gotta get to the microphone first.
My name is Mark Iewski. My address is two-on-eight-two-one East Sunset Drive.
Okay.
It's the second house in off of Card Road. And I'm just kind of curious about the location of the retention pond. I know you've put the picture up there a number of times, but I don't see where it is actually. Could you just point that out to me? So where is the retention pond in relation to my home? The common area is the retention pond. It's nowhere even near my place.
So if, if I could, I, I don't mean to, to cut you off here, sir. So the next agenda item, I think, is going to relate more to your question. So the, the residential piece, which you see on the screen now, is actually the next agenda item. So I think if you can see my cursor on the screen here, your house, based on what you're saying, is roughly here. So there is a detention basin to the rear of your property, but we'll go over that with the next agenda item.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, then, well, let's go ahead and close the public portion with a motion at six forty-eight.
So moved. I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, Mr. Box, if you want to address anything?
Sure, so I'll start with traffic, and I, I know this is not the answer he's going to want to hear, but we don't control the roads. They're not our roads. The county road department controls the roads, which is why I think you guys were asking the questions about the, the driveways locations being approved by the county. So the county will, will take a look at traffic patterns and conditions and determine whether those curb cuts can go there or not. So whether or not this creates too much traffic is, is not something that we really have jurisdiction on. That's the county road department. I think the other question he had was with regards to a masonry wall. So let me go back a few slides here. Masonry wall is required anytime a commercial property abuts a residential property or an industrial abuts a residential property. So that's why Unit Four on the east side will have a masonry wall because that will be abutting a future residential property. The existing homes that you see in this image will all be abutting new residential property. So there will not be a masonry wall. It's not required per ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions or comments? May, do we have a motion on the floor?
There's no further discussion, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that we approve the site plan for Fremont Crossing, the commercial component, which is permanent parcel number zero-eight dash thirty-five dash one-hundred dash zero-zero-four, per the recommendation findings of our planning department and our staff.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next item is site plan Fremont Crossing Residential. Permanent Parcel zero-eight-three-five-one-zero-zero-zero-four. Located on the southeast corner of Twenty One Mile Road and Card. Section thirty-five, MM twenty-one, Card LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So again, this is the same site, the same PUD. You've seen it before. This is the residential component to that PUD. They are still maintaining the twenty-one units, which was in their general design plan. They are proposing a curb cut again on Card Road and on Twenty One Mile Road. They will be connecting to the commercial phase with the pedestrian pathway. And they will be constructing the eight-foot-wide walk along Card, or excuse me, along Twenty One Mile Road as it's required. The one on Card Road already exists. All of their units meet the dimensional setback requirements and all the other dimensional requirements. And, and that being said, I think staff is, is generally pretty pleased with this plan. They're providing a fair amount of landscaping. As you see here, there'll be trees in, in front yards and rear yards. The gentleman previously had the question about the detention basin. So again, I'll move my cursor here. You can see this detention. That was, this, this is the same detention that you saw on the previous plan that said common area. So for reference, this, this is kind of the center portion of this entire site. And you've got the residential wrapping around it, but there's additional detention basin here out near Card Road that I think will be in the rear of, of that gentleman's existing home. Again, they're, they're meeting all the requirements. Their signage locations are, are approved. And staff is recommending approval.
All right. Mr. Izzy?
Good evening. Mario Izzy with MM Twenty Mile, Twenty One Mile Card. Four-six-six-zero-zero, Romeo Plank, Suite Number Five.
Thank you.
No questions. Only, if you have any for me, I'd be happy to answer, answer those.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Bentley? Just a clarification to Mr. Box. The retention basin then, that will be on the southwest corner of the residential portion of this development. Will that require between the, between the existing homes, a fence?
I do not believe, I do not believe so, no.
But only if the slopes are not greater than one and four or whatever?
Correct. If they, if they get further in, in engineering and determine that, you know, essentially it needs to be dug deeper and then the slope of those sides gets a little steeper, it's possible that they may have to come back and, and propose a fence around it per township requirements. But as of right now, what they're proposing does not require it.
So then my question to Mr. Izzy, is it expected that that detention basin have water in it for very long after a storm or it, it doesn't say it's a retention basin, so it's not just retaining the storm water and then slowly letting it go out to whatever the storm is, or the storm is, but it's a detention basin, which makes me think that it's going to have water in it. And do you know whether or not the slopes are, will require a fence?
As of right now, my understanding, this design does not require, by township ordinance, does not require a fence. As far as this pond or basin holding water, I believe by its current design, it will hold some water for the majority of the time. If we get further down with the engineering, as Mr. Box has suggested, if, if this pond needs or requires more volume, for whatever reason, if the, if the slopes get any steeper and we have to put a fence in, we would do that. I would... Because it's such a prominent feature at the entranceway of this development, I would personally, I think we would try to steer away from any sort of a decorative fence at this time, if we could. But if the ordinance requires us to do it and we have nowhere else to store this water, then we will have no choice but to do that. But it's, we'll know as, as we get a little further in the engineering.
Yeah, until you find out how much retainered you need.
Yes, sir.
You won't know how deep, okay.
Yeah, I, I believe our ultimate stormwater outlet is at Card Road. So this would probably be one of the lower invert elevations of the storm sewer system of the overall site.
Sure.
Project, so.
Okay. Just a, a comment. If, since this is so close to the residential areas and, and usually you have a detention area, what have you, is there any treatment, you know, to keep, let's say it does hold water for a good amount of time, is there any treatment for mosquitoes and such of, of that nature, so that doesn't become a nuisance issue for the, either the existing condominium or the, the new?
Part of our normal routine maintenance on, on all of our residential projects. If we have a, a water feature and we see that there's an unusual buildup of algae, it's, it's a natural occurrence. We'll, we'll treat that water. We'll do three, four treatments during the year to try to treat that, try to keep that water as, as algae-free as possible.
All right. I appreciate your, your clarification on that and just kind of the things that might concern people around the area, so.
I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes. Mario, can, I, I wondered if you could just clarify what was on the landscaping plan. There was notes that said that sod and irrigation was to be put in on finished grades for this residential component. It had it in the, it looked like in the general common areas, but it also looked like, as far as the notes, if you can clarify for me, was this also in the, like, the limited common areas for the, like, backyards of the duplex? And you, as a developer, are you going to install the irrigation system and the sod on finished grade as each unit or each building is built?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Good question. Thank you. So because we are self-performing, MJC will build these units and sell these. This is not a rental project. We will sell these. We, generally, once we get through the engineering portion of this, we'll generally sit down with one of our irrigation contractors because it's very important that we figure out where these water services are going to go for the general common element irrigation system. And I know Macomb Township is very particular about how many taps, because being a developer, being the business, Mr. Spatafora, you understand, we have to get addresses early in this, in the process. And sometimes those addresses are kind of difficult to obtain. So we try to, we try to do our due diligence as soon in the, early in the process as we can with the engineering and try to figure out where the water service taps are going to be, plus the size. If these are two-inch taps, inch and a half, one inch, and the irrigation contractor's got to understand how much volume water he can pull and how much area and how many zones that they can, they can sprinkle based on the size of that tap. So anything outside of the unit that we're selling, that is considered a, would be a limited common element. But yes, we are responsible for the finished grade, for the sod, for the irrigation. I don't believe we would pull water off of each one of these units. I think it would be more of a general I think it would be more of a general tap.
Separate tap.
Yeah, separate system that the HOA, the residential HOA, would probably maintain on a regular basis because I don't think you would want to rely on, God forbid, somebody was out of town, you couldn't get into the unit. They're on vacation or they're doing, you know, four, four months down in Florida type of thing. So, I, I think that those general common elements, we want to make sure that that's maintained by the, by the residential HOA and, and they understand and control where those taps are gonna go.
Now, did you indicate this residential HOA will be self-managed by your organization?
Initially, we self-managed that until we, we reached that, uh, that milestone, the sales and marketing period when that transition's over, um, and we turn, we turn this over to the HOA. It'd be great if we sell all these in two years and, you know, it happens sooner than later. We'll see what the economy does and what the market is like. But, um, um, generally, after we get about seventy, eighty percent, some of the residents that have moved in, they start to get more of an interactive role. We will hand off to, to more of a management company, a residential management company, and they'll take that over. And, uh, whatever we're maybe delinquent on or maybe something that we're not doing a good, for instance, the pond, maybe we're not treating it four times a year and we have to up that. So, we make, they make sure that that gets done on a, on a better schedule if, for whatever reason, the people who are asking to do that doesn't get done. So, just an example.
So, again, uh, just to be consistent, I believe as I'm reading the landscape plan for the residential component for the forty-two units, uh, will the association, uh, maintain, uh, mowing the lawn during the growing season and take care of snow shoveling, uh, let's say, the streets, the driveway, the walkway, front porch, or something like that in the winter? Or is that gonna be the responsibility of the homeowners?
The driveways would be the responsibility of the homeowners. If at a later date, they all get together and say that they want to hire a snow removal contractor and have everybody put in or pay their fee, their, their fair share to have their driveway done by the company that's handling the street, because this road is a, it's a private road.
Right.
This is not a public road that we're proposing. So, that snow plowing would have to be done by a private company, most likely managed initially by us, and then we would hand that over to the, to the HOA.
Okay.
Management company at that point in time. But the driveways, I would say initially for sure, it'll probably be up to the individual. The sidewalks in front of those units, up to the individual. But the sidewalks that are not in front of a, a residential unit would be considered general common element. Whoever's plowing the street should take care of those sidewalks. Plus, the, the, the public benefit, um, sidewalks that connect to the commercial, because we want to encourage foot traffic to those commercial developments and try to encourage people to patronize those, those, uh, those businesses. So, that's why we have the res, the, uh, the pedestrian footpath connection there.
Yeah, I only ask because a lot of times with residential developments, condominium developments such as this with, as pertaining the bylaws, it, it can all depend. Sometimes you have a strict association that will maintain everything for, you know, nice appearance, aesthetics and uniformity. Other times, you know, you're gonna leave it to, um, the homeowners. Obviously, I think, uh, your organization hopes that they're sold to, you know, quality homeowners that will, of course, maintain their, uh, own limited common area, their units, if you will, uh, interior and exterior. And the note does say that the homeowners are to maintain it. That's just, I was just wondering how far of the maintenance would it be? You know, if it was grass cutting and snow, uh, shoveling those parts, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Box, um, and this might be to Mr. Izzy too. I guess this is something I hadn't caught on my initial review that I'm noticing today. So, the masonry wall, it goes, it, it goes down the east property line between, I guess, that'd be unit four of the commercial portion and the residential. And it also is along the east end of the south property line, but it does not go all the way to Card. Is that accurate? Or all the way to the right of way?
I believe it goes, uh, roughly from unit or, or building one, uh, down to building three. The, the pieces that are immediately adjacent to commercial.
So, I guess my question would be, and maybe we already approved this in the PUD plan, but if the, if the detention basin does not have a wall next to it, it would imply that the detention basin is not residential, also doesn't have a wall because it's adjacent to, to commercial. But then wouldn't there then have to be a wall adjacent to the detention basin on the south end? Because it's not residential and where non-residential buts residential, it requires a wall? Seems like either it would be a wall on one side or the other, but I, I hadn't noticed this, but it doesn't appear to be either, on either side.
Well, so that detention basin is actually being utilized by both commercial and residential. So, it's, it's kind of a little bit of both, uh, but that is, is something that was approved in the, the PUD general design plan of where the wall is located.
Okay. Something I think I, I would, I would hope I would have caught the second time. I feel like it might be an inconsistency, uh, that we should maybe, um, consider in the future, but, uh, very good. Thank you, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then at seven oh five, I'd like to open it to the public, see if anybody wants to come up and speak.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
I'll support.
Thank you. Supported by Mr. Meyerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. So, if you'd like to come up to the podium, we got four minutes. Please do give your name and address, and we will answer all questions at the end after everybody's had a chance to speak. Anyone? You're good? Okay, I'm gonna make sure, just making sure. Sir, what about you? You're good?
I just think there's gonna be a liability with it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if you were good or not, I, you know, it's okay. All right, and let's close the public portion at seven oh six with a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Word.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, folks, we have a motion on the floor or a, an item on the floor that needs a motion.
Again, Mr. Chair, if there's no, uh, further, uh, discussion, I will, um, again, um, make a motion to recommend site plan approval for Fremont Crossing, the residential component, which is personal, excuse me, permanent parcel zero eight dash three five dash one hundred dash zero zero four, uh, pursuant to the recommendation and findings of the planning department and staff.
Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora. I will second that motion. And Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item, site plan, clean hub car wash, permanent parcel zero eight three five zero zero, one zero zero, zero zero four, located on the southeast corner of Twenty-One Mile Road and Card. Section thirty-five. And I hope I say this right, Sammy Patois, petitioner? That's probably not even close, is it?
Well, my name's Ezier, uh, my name's Alan Hall, um, with API and I'm the architect. Um, Sammy, um, attack is not here today.
Okay, and your address, please, sir?
It's five one zero one Williams Lake Road in Waterford, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Box, we go to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, so you see here kind of their overall, uh, plan, the general design plan that you saw at the PUD level. Um, so we're talking about what's labeled as phase three here, uh, for this item. This is a clean hub, uh, drive-through car wash. They have access off the road, uh, I'm gonna go back a slide here, uh, that you saw in the first item this evening, which, uh, was this driveway here, this, this, uh, spine road, if you will, uh, that serves the site. Uh, so that is where they have their access ingress and egress, actually in two locations. Uh, they do have all the stacking spaces that meet the requirements, their dimension, uh, for, for drive aisles, meet all the requirements, and they do also have their escape lane for emergency purposes. Uh, and that meets the dimensional standards. Uh, they meet all of the setbacks from the adjacent residences as well as from the, uh, center lines of the roads. Uh, they do have a monument sign proposed here, uh, and it does meet the applicable setbacks, uh, as well as all of the landscaping that you see here. And their counts do match the, the drawings, uh, on their landscape plan and all their screening requirements have been met. That being said, site plan is recommended for approval, uh, by township staff.
Okay, sir, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah, just one item, and that's in the, the engineering review. We got our review prior to the development, actually getting their final, um, preliminary reviews. Um, and in our letter, it says that there's gonna be onsite drainage or stormwater management onsite. We're actually gonna coordinate with detention ponds with the PUD. I just wanted to clarify that in the letter, so, otherwise, I'm here for questions.
Okay. Go to Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bentley?
I had one, um, since this is a commercial, um, and, uh, does it require the wall then between the residential, uh, portion, even though it's not directly adjacent to homes? That is the residential access, um, and wondered if it should be, uh, separated by masonry wall?
Right, so I, I don't think it is, there's some common space in between, that's also where the walkway. So, it's kind of falls in that kind of residential, kind of commercial, uh, lands. Um, and again, the, the general design plan through the PUD did not indicate a wall being there. I think that would have been the appropriate time to call for that wall.
But if, uh, the zoning ordinance requires it, um...
If it, the zoning ordinance requires it when it's next to residential, and I think this is kind of a, a gray area, if you will, that it's, it's a common space for the, for the PUD as a whole. It's not necessarily just residential space.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
When you're talking about the water treatment, do you recycle the water or treat the water onsite?
Um, we recycle, um, there's actually three tanks and they recycle about fifty percent of the water that's used in the car wash. And then the remainder that goes out goes through an oil separator before it ends in our system. Um, but the, the water that's actually recycled, um, is very clean when it goes, goes away and walk, and they actually, the, the equipment people say that they can sell the water as bottled water. We're not attempting to do that, but that's what they say.
Vodable? I wouldn't buy it.
Okay.
So, I, I just need to follow up on that.
Yeah.
Help me out here. The car gets washed, it's full of mud, it's full of salt, all that water goes into a pit.
Yes.
And then it's separated, filtered?
Yeah, it's filtered, and so the, the hard particles, um, go into a trench. Yeah. Like the sand.
Right.
And actually settles in the trench, and so they gotta scoop those out. So, that's gonna be a main maintenance issue in the trench itself.
Yeah.
Looser particles will go into the system, but they drop off on the first tank and they're harder, and then the next tank is lesser, um, so that, it gets cleaned, you know, through that process. Then it goes through the scrubber and then back into the, the wash system, is the wash we reuse. The wash that's, the, the area, the water that doesn't make it past that, that clean water goes into the oil separator, which has a third, you know, drop zone, and then it goes into the system.
So, so the dirty water hits a trough, then it hits another set of filters.
Yes.
Then it hits a third set of filters that's pumped back on the vehicles.
That's correct, yes, yes.
And that water just keeps going round and round?
It'll get cycled, but that's, like I said, as it gets dirty, it will exit, you know, but it...
It'll actually end up the last section or a time, it'll go through the oil separator to hold the oils and then out.
Then out, that's correct.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And another question, this on the car wash, mechanics of it, how lo, how loud is this car wash? Sometime they tend to be loud with the fans.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, there are dryers, um, that are in, or blowers, I should say, um, in the exit of the tunnel. Um, the loudness of that won't exceed the, the cars and the road, um, that's right on, on Card Road. So, that, just to give you an idea, but we, and if you also notice on the landscape plan, if you see that when you exit out of the tunnel, there's some landscaping, like a little green island there. I don't know if you see what I'm talking about, but when you exit, it's right to your right. Those two, there's a little, um, mechanical piece in there, that's the vacuum, um, pump for the vacuums and the booms. There's some noise to that, right, but that we kept all the noise into, right by the exit. Neither one, they'll cancel each other out because they're, they're both about the same. And then by the time it gets to the road, you won't even hear it, it'd be conversation level at that point. Um, and since we're talking about the, the vacuums, um, there are vacuum booms, you can see that on the, in the parking stalls. Um, there's, each, each of those stalls have vacuums. Those, those spaces are twelve-foot wide rather than ten. Sometimes people want to use two spaces because they want to use, open the door or some what have you. So, it may look like a lot, you know, but it's more for convenience, is what it's for. Um, but there's no noise at, uh, in the inlet of those vacuums, it's all back at the...
It's all pulled through the building?
All pulled through that one unit, yeah, so it pulls them in. Um, you'll have some sucking noises, but that'll be in the cars when they're doing their thing. So, just to clarify that, that, what the noise would be on the site.
And one last question, just real quick, roughly how many people run this facility?
Um, usually it's about two, two people.
That's it?
That's it. Um, and so what happens is that when they come through, you'll see there's quite a few stacking lane. You see all the lines up there? Again, that's not intended to show you how many cars will be on the property, like, oh my word, they have all these cars. Most of it is for convenience and speed. So, the outer side, outer lane is for members only. Um, there's a, there's a, a radio frequency card reader that they put a sticker on their windows, um, and it'll pick up their package. So, there's a number of packages that this car wash offers. When they pull in, that will pick up their package and set the wash to their needs, whatever they bought, purchased. And they go right on in and go in. Um, so there's no, no attendant for that, it's all automated. Um, there is, you'll see there's two li, or three lines there, the outer one closest to the, the bypass lane. Um, that's for members only, the other two are pretty much for members too, they both have the readers. The ones closest to the car wash itself has a tenant will come out and handle new business and they'll talk with them and that kind of stuff. So, um, typically that may be, you know, three or four minutes as they discuss that. But it's really, it's really in time for convenience, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm done.
You're good? Mr. Bentley?
For the vacuum, um, system, uh, and, and I, um, I don't fully rec, uh, recall all the details, but, um, I know there was a concern about sound. You tended to indicate that the noise of the wash, uh, and then the noise of the vacuum would cancel each other out, they're about the same, how do they cancel?
Well, it's, it's the...
That's not acoustics, that's...
I'm sorry, well, with acoustics, the, the decibels, if they're about the same, it's the same decimal, they don't add. So, the two, if they're both at thirty decimals, they're both at thirty decimals. It doesn't become sixty, that's all I, that's what I meant.
What is the expected DB?
So, it's, um, it, I, I think it's in my report here, I think it's like, um, I think it's thirty decibels. I think it's when it's right at the machine, um, if I can get that, and I can get that information to you.
Does it have, um, a, a silencer on it?
Um, they, they don't, um, but we do have arboretum around them. Um, so the arboretum are, are six feet high and they're tightly packed around the units, we're in the green area there. Um, that'll kill almost fifty percent of the noise coming from that piece. Um, the exit, yeah, thank you, that's where it is.
That's at their mature height, or are you putting them in?
We're putting it in six foot, they'll be at six foot when we bring them in.
And how high is the equipment?
Um, it's only like three, you know, three or four feet. It's, it's three feet, plus there's a little canister. The canister that's there with each thing is where the, the sucks up the debris, goes into that canister there, so that, there's a heist of that, but they're only about, it's, it's way, like, only this high when you stand next to it, the canister part, and that's probably the highest part. Um, and then, uh, um, they're at each of the booms, there's also trash receptacles where they put their stuff in there too, is what they're doing. Um, and then there's speed doors on the, the tunnel too. Um, so the speed doors are very quick and they come down, um, and that will trap a lot of the noise also. Yeah, obviously when the car is coming through, they're gonna be on.
Yeah, I didn't see any sound, uh, information in, in, uh, in the presentation, so. Do we have, Mr. Box, limits on sound? Do we have, Mr. Box, limits on sound from that equipment?
If they violate the noise ordinance, yeah, it could be considered a nuisance. I don't know off the top of my head what that is, but it's certainly higher than thirty decibels. I'm guessing it's fifty-five or sixty.
Okay. All right. Good. Anyone else?
I saw you have one on Van Dyke, just north of...
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Is this a corporate, state owners or franchise?
It is, so this is, you know, Sammy owns the one in Van Dyke. We're also putting one on Twenty-three Mile in Shelby Township, it's being constructed right now. And this is be the third one.
Okay.
It's, it's not a franchise, it's his.
It's not a franchise?
It's his, yes.
Well, it is.
It's his, yeah, it's his product, yeah.
Okay.
I had one more question regarding the lighting. Lighting, it should be zero at the property line?
Correct.
And...
Zero-foot candles.
Pardon?
Zero-foot candles, yes.
Right, and, and I'm, I think in one of the plans that I blew up, none of them are really at zero. So I'm not sure how much leeway you have. But, and I know part of that, I think it's only the southern one that we would be concerned about as being residential adjacent there, but they get up, you know, point five two. And I don't know if that's an issue or not, but that was a concern.
It's on the southern end of the site?
Yes.
So there's no...
Sheet L three.
Again, I don't have my packet, I apologize, I don't have my packet in front of me. But just looking at the, the overall layout, it looks like the southern end of the site is adjacent to essentially the roadway.
Entry, yeah.
Yep. So I would not consider that a major concern.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then I need a motion at seven twenty-two to open it to the public. Sir, you are our public tonight. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come up and speak at our podium?
What time you got?
Seven twenty-two.
Seven twenty-two.
You have four, you have to take your name and address again, and you have four minutes.
My name's Mark Gajewski, my address is two one eight two one East Sunset Drive, second house in off Card Road. All I really need to know is how much space is there between the back of my property and the roadway, the retention pond? Do you have a, something that you could, you know, a copy of something with dimensions so I can go home and take a look at what it's gonna look like back there? Is there anything, anybody? You got nothing, really?
I can get you a copy of the plans, yep.
Very much, I mean, I, I need to know how far behind my house is that retention pond? I, I still can't see it on your, on, on the, up there, I don't see the, that southern or that retention pond close to Card Road. I can't even see it on there.
It would appear, and this is a guesstimate based upon the scale on sheet LS two, but it's, it's approximately three hundred, at least three hundred feet from the back of your property.
Wow, well then, you know, it...
Going north.
I would, if I could suggest, instead of a wall between the car wash, just a row of trees. It would reduce noise and be prettier than a wall. You know, you've got two trees on your drawing, make it all trees.
BD ten?
I mean, what's, trees are, trees are cheap, right? Compared to cinder block and whatnot, and the labor involved.
There are Black Hill spruces.
Those are nice, anything's nice, you know? That would be, that is good.
That's what's, that's what's along that line.
Okay. That's it, those little ones there, closer to the building, right? I'm talking about out, where you were gonna put...
He's talking about...
Where, where you would put a wall.
Yeah.
Where you were talking about putting a wall, why don't you just put a row of trees there instead?
That's where the trees are, are showing.
Is that where they're showing there? Well, then, I have no problem with, it's gonna be nice, should be good.
Thank you.
You know, it should be attractive. Hopefully, the condos will fill up.
All right.
Are there any other businesses, can I ask, that are considering moving to the commercial site?
This is a public comment, so they can answer those after, so they typically don't question and answer.
I'm not gonna waste your time.
And the developer's right there, so I'm sure that you could ask him that afterwards.
I'm really, actually, I'm good. I just was concerned about how it was gonna affect my house. I don't, I'm not gonna waste your time. Thanks, everybody.
You're not wasting, you're not wasting our time, just so you know. Have a good night. All right. At this time, at seven twenty-five, let's close the public portion with a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we have an item on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question if I could, for Mr. Box. And Mr. Box, I know you don't have your drawings in front of you, but with regards to Mr. Bentley's comments on the lighting plan, I was just looking at it during, during that comment. On the southeast corner of the parcel, there is a portion where that the site plan does directly abut residential, directly a residential yard. I think the wall is going down through there, the landscaping is going down through there, so I think we're indicating that's residential by the other stuff. And just as a note, the photometric map shows that line going from point one up to, say, point six at the north end of that, that stretch. So I don't know if that's something that should be addressed maybe secondarily, or if we can have someone look at that. Obviously, in a PUD, it's, it's maybe not quite as straightforward as other site plans that we have. But it would appear that it's not zero at the, at the property line, abutting the residential. Just be the comment I'd have.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wanna make a motion? No one?
You live for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Oliver, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I moved, we approved a site plan for a clean hub car wash from the parcel oh eight three five four zero zero, zero zero four, located on southeast corner of Twenty-one Mile Road in Card.
Okay, I'll second that. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes. Question? Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next item on our list is public comments and non-agenda items.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Izzy, unless you and your friend have something to say, we'll, we'll just move on to the next item. Okay, Commissioners' comments, anyone? No one? Okay, and we'll move on to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. We kicked off the sidewalk program for two thousand twenty-two. We have approximately four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to put in the sidewalks, updating. That's that. We're in the Corners Park, if anyone's ever been back there, there was like a outside ice skating rink. And we're, that's getting removed, and we're putting pickleball nets and stuff like that in there. So there's some updating there. Township hired a appraiser aide for the tax department, so that's something. And we've, we've, on the fire department, there was three lieutenants promoted to captain.
Wow.
So we got three new captains. And speaking of fire department, if anyone has watched Firefighter Joe Warren, he made his walk last week, and, two weeks ago, and he raised over a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for fighting cancer.
Congratulations to Joe.
That's quite a compliment to, to people that he's raising money for, so.
Absolutely.
And that's it.
All right. ZBA liaison update, Mr. Tuckfield.
I'm, I'm gonna ask Mr. Oliver a question.
Question for, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we'll hold off.
You don't have to answer it, but I'll ask him. I'm just curious, the sidewalk money, what time period is that over?
The what?
The sidewalk money you mentioned.
It's one year.
One year?
That's a year, yeah.
Good to hear, a lot of people like hearing about sidewalks.
Correct me, that is a year.
One year, yep, the annual gap closure program.
You don't get all used.
Yeah, I'm sure it will, sure it will. ZBA, I just have one comment this evening.
I wanted to just, Mr. Bentley, did you have anything you wanted to ask Mr. Oliver?
You know, why did Aaron get a chance to ask, and I didn't?
It really wasn't a question.
That's why I didn't, that's why I...
Mr. Bentley, I was bending my own agenda item.
I'm so sorry.
I gave him one chance.
No, that's okay.
All right, Mr. Tuckfield, ZBA.
At our last ZBA meeting, we had a special meeting last week, which had an interesting conclusion. But the scenario that we had there was a definition on solar panel arrays. I think it's something that the Planning Commission should probably look at at some point. There was a request for a ground-mounted solar, and our ordinance didn't seem to have a good place to put it, more or less. The ZBA was asked on one specific place if it could be defined in that location. ZBA deadlocked on that definition, so we didn't even come to a good, good conclusion. But I think reading through it, it would be good to have a little bit more clarification. It's never good to have something that someone might want to build that we don't have a good definition for and can't determine where we go. So I think Mr. Box was looking into it, and I would expect we may hear on it at some point. I don't know where it'll land in our list of priorities, as I know we have a few. But it is something that I think was pointed out, and, and it would be good for us to look at, particularly with some proliferation of solar technologies over the last ten years or so.
Absolutely. So I, I would ask, you're looking for size, and a determination on size, is there height requirements? Is there output requirement, or minimums, or maximums? Is there, is there whether or not they're, they're tracking or not tracking?
I think in this case, what we were looking at, it was just a matter of there's really nowhere that we're referencing at all. So if someone wants to put it on the ground, is it counted as an accessory structure? Is it counted as an outside utility? Where does it go in the easements? Like, what's, what's the allowable density? There's really, there's, there's probably two areas in the ordinance that you might say are adjacent to those. But neither of them really accurately, I think, describe ground-mounted solar, even if, even if we wanted to try to see if it could fit the penumbra, so to speak. So I, I assume that'll come from Mr. Box's department about what it would, what it would be defined. I would think that at least it's, it's, you know, where it sits in the setbacks and setbacks and total coverage at a minimum, so.
That, is that something that we can cover in the new zoning ordinance?
Absolutely.
Is there a model that already has that, that we're using?
Well, there's a lot of communities that have addressed sole, ground-mounted solar. It's never really come up in our township, so we haven't had a need to address it. The only thing in our ordinance right now, in terms of residential units having solar, is that it says you can't have it on the front of your house, you have to have it on the rear of your house. And so that's on your house. And, and to Mr. Tuckfield's point, what do you do for someone who wants to have a ground-mounted one? It's completely silent to it in our ordinance currently.
Okay, thank you. Good question.
That is a good question.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir.
Fox, you said it has to be on the, on top of the house?
The way it's currently written, our ordinance only allows for solar panels on the rear of the house. So yeah, like on your roof, and it has to be on the rear, it can't be on the front or side of your house.
Okay, well, how did my neighbor get away with it?
Good question.
Can it be on a wall? Or just the roof?
As of now, just the roof, because nobody's ever tried to put one on a wall or ground-mounted.
Or, or asked for it, apparently.
Or asked for it.
So we're talking about solar arrays, electric-producing solar arrays, but solar panels?
Solar panel, that's what we're talking about, a solar panel.
So a solar panel is for heat generation. A photo, a photo, photoelectric panel is for generating electricity. So is, is there, do we have ordinance for both? Or I should say for the solar or heat generating panels?
So I think that, that furthers the point here. We don't even know the definition of a solar panel or a photo...
Photovoltaic.
Yes, so I think we're, we're referring to it as a solar panel, and, and you're telling me now that a solar panel is actually something different. So I think that furthers the point here, we need to address it in the ordinance. It needs to be defined, and needs to be outlined where it can and cannot be.
Okay. Agreed.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Tuckfield?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Planning Department items.
So I just have one item, and I think Mr. Tuckfield's comments was, was a perfect lead-in to that. So as you know, we've been updating the ordinance. I have a draft version of that here to hand out to you tonight to take home. I will say it's roughly eighty percent done at this point. You're gonna see lots of comments in there that are still just placeholders for us. We have things highlighted where it references a current section number. Right now, it's referencing a section that in the current ordinance, that's just our note to, we have to go back and change wherever that section actually ends up at the end. So you, you're gonna see some comments and notes in there that, just understand that those are, a lot of those are for us. But we generally want you to get a better feel for the, the layout, how we're reorganizing things. We have made some modifications and changes in there. But the biggest point I wanted to make was, I would be very happy if the longest section of the ordinance was the definitions. So at any point, if you're reading through it, and, and you come to a term that you don't understand, write it down. We need to define it. Solar panels is a perfect example, so I will hand these out at the end of the meeting, that's all I got for you.
Okay. Then motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Bentley?
You're gonna hand those out, did you have a timeline as to when you wanted us to review and get back any comments we might have?
Yeah, I think at this point, we're, we're looking not the next Planning Commission meeting, but the, the Planning Commission meeting after that, if you can bring these back with you. So give you a month, essentially, to go through it. Feel free to call me or email me in, in the interim if you have more pressing comments or concerns. We're gonna, like I said, it's roughly eighty percent, we're gonna be filling in some of those gaps, as well as our, our internal staff is gonna be reviewing these at the same time as you. So once you return them in about a month from now, we'll, we'll take in all of your comments, and hopefully after that, bring back a final draft that we can look at and, and move forward to the board.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned at seven thirty-eight.
Good night.
See you, guys.
Thank you.